Come chat with you guys about our annual audit. So in your packet, you would have received the entire audit report, which looks like this 50, 60, 70, 80 pages long. Yes, I see you all look very tired. You were obviously looking at it and it's horrible to read. So what I did is I just passed out tonight. The actual pages that I want to talk through. These are pages right out of the audit report. And just kind of walk through the highlights. So this is what I like to do as opposed to go page by page through this or the, you know, the summaries, et cetera. So let me get into that again, ask questions as we're going along. I'd be happy to answer them and we'll go from there. So the, the very first page you see five, three on the bottom there. This is our general fund. So our general operating fund, which has public safety, finance, assessing clerks, all of our general functions at the city. So how did we end up our year ended June 30, 2023? And if you look at the rectangle, the square down there for the year, we increased our fund balance to the tune of 244,019. So our fund balance went from $6.7 million to a little over $7 million. So a very good year for us. This marks the second or third year in a row that we've actually lived within our, lived within our means and increased our fund balance. So increased our rainy day fund. So that is quite an accomplishment. The other thing that the, to look at here is the state law, the budget act says that we need to appropriate amounts for spending and we're not supposed to spend a dollar more than that. Otherwise it's a violation of the budget act and the auditors have to report on that. So if you flip to the next page and five dash two, every single department within the city was under budget except for two. And there's a, an explanation for those two. The two are, and I have them highlighted on that page there lawsuit judgments and the attorney fees related to those lawsuit judgments. So what happened was in August or September, after our year was already over, we ended up settling a couple of long-term significant cases. And you can see there, the total lawsuit judgments paid out was over 1.3 million dollars just for that one fiscal year. So a very substantial amount, but unfortunately six or 700,000 of that came in after our fiscal year was over. But because the lawsuit started before June 30th, the accounting rules required us to throw it back. So that is really the sole reason for that variance. And obviously the legal fees associated with it. So of all of our budgets or all of our departments in the entire city, those were the only two departments that were over budget. So again, kudos to the staff here, the department heads for living within their means as far as that goes. So on the, the next page on five dash one is the revenues. So that one section right there is the general fund revenue. So these are the revenues that we, that we live off of again, for our general operating fund. The very first line in there that highlighted I have 3.455 million dollars. That's our property taxes. Our property taxes continued strong. So we've had some new development here. The inflation rate for last year was at 5%, which was a, almost a 30-year high as far as inflation rate goes. And so that meant that the city recognized the rate of inflation on property taxes on most parcels. So our property taxes were almost three or $400,000 greater than we originally anticipated when the budget was passed. So again, good news there. Income tax, if you recall, when I was here last year, our income tax revenues, they rebounded nicely. We went from about three and a half million to over 5 million in fiscal 2022. We thought there might be a little regression, but they stayed strong during the entire last year. So they ended about 5.1 million dollars. Again, very strong numbers that remained constant from, for the past two years. So that's awesome. The next orange highlight there, that $584,000. If you recall, we got some ARPA COVID money from the state to the tune of about 1.1 million dollars. What that was budgeted to be spent over two fiscal years. So half of that was spent in fiscal 22, the other half is spent in the last fiscal year. So I highlight that because that revenue right there of which the 584, 566 is the ARPA money, that will go away so that we do not have for the current fiscal year that we're in. So again, a loss of, you know, over half a million dollars on the federal revenue side. The big rectangle there fines and forfeiture. So that represents the, our share of the tickets written by our officers. And as you know, we've had a substantial staffing shortage. So shortage of officers means shortage of officers to write tickets. And you can see there, our original budget was around $900,000. We only ended with 415. So less than half of what we thought we were getting. And it was almost $300,000 less than what it was the year before. So again, one of those areas where as we continue to hire more tickets will be written and we hope that revenue will rebound as well. And then the last orange that I've highlighted there, that's property sales. So we had one substantial property sale during last year during the fiscal year ended June of 23. That was about $290,000. And so again, those property sales are not budgeted. So those, that was a one-time influx of property sales to the tune of $360,000. So all in all, if you look at that total revenues, our amended budget said we were going to be a little over $14 million and we ended a little over $14 million. So we were pretty much right on the mark with, with our revenues, which again is a very good thing. One thing to point out though, on the next page, 4.5. So our fund balance, so we said fund balance for the general fund of $7 million. So that is a, a very good number to have as a rainy day fund. So the cities worked hard over the past five, 10 years or whatever to build that fund balance up. The issue we have is if you see there, I've highlighted the 7,030. That is our fund balance as we sit here today. The issue is the other highlighted amount I have there, which is the 5,030. That is the amount that the water and sewer fund has borrowed from the general fund to pay their bills. Primarily the GLEWA lawsuit and the court order payments. We had several, we had two $1 million court order payments during last fiscal year. And they said, we don't care where you get the money from. Well, guess what? The water and sewer fund, go ahead. Yep. Well, the, the general fund loaned them cash to the tune of $5 million cumulatively over the past five years.
So, so that's how, that's how it was.
It was about a million, a million and a half dollars a year is what was being loaned to the water and sewer fund.
And if I'm remembering right, last time the value of the revenue, you said that's just the loan that we're not going to pay.
Well, ideally the rate should be set so that the rates cover our operating costs as well as this borrowing to repay us back. If we do not get it back, that's the issue, which why I have it highlighted. If ultimately we say we're not raising the rates or the water sewer fund cannot generate that money to repay us, ultimately we'll have to basically write that off as an expense. Basically contribute it to the water and sewer fund and our fund balance will drop from $7 million to $2 million. It was when the court said, you must pay us a million dollars to GLEWA. We said water and sewer fund doesn't have a million dollars. They said, we don't care. You'll be in contempt of court unless you give us a million dollars. So we had to cut him a check for a million dollars and that came out of the pot of money the city has. So, and it was, it was stuff like that as well as the lawsuit cost. Yes, this number here is cumulative through June 30, 2023. That is all the ins and the outs. That's what's owed as of that point. Well, that and the legal fees to fight it. So we were, we were spending more than a million dollars in legal fees. Our rates weren't set to cover those substantial costs. And I'll get into that a little bit when I get into the, the fund itself here. So again, the concern is that if the water and sewer fund can that or does not repay that money, in essence, we're going to have to treat that as an expense and our fund balance will drop from 7 million to $2 million. So it's important that it does get repaid or if a decision is made that it never will get repaid, it's important that we recognize that fact and adjust our fund balance accordingly. If our fund balance drops to $2 million, obviously that's a lot less wiggle room than it is with, with $7 million. So again, losing the grant money and you know, income tax revenue doesn't come through, et cetera. That's what our rainy day fund is for. But again, I just want to make sure that's important to highlight that out. The next page again, just highlights the fact. So with a fund balance of $7 million, we should have approximately $7 million worth of cash. And if you can see the first rectangle I have up there, it highlights our cash and investments at June 30 and that total is just about $2 million. So the $2 million of fund balance that I talk about, that is real cash that is sitting there in the general fund. And then you can see right underneath it, we have that advances to other funds. That's the, that's the next one right after. So not that one, keep going, not that one, that one right there. Of the, the two red boxes on the left-hand side there. So the actual cash the general fund had was a little over $2 million. And you can see there, the loan to the water and sewer fund of the 5 million, that's our fund balance. Those two numbers right there basically make up our fund balance. All right. Next page on four 11, this is the water and sewer fund. So again, in the water and sewer fund and here is both the water and sewer fund and the FIA fund. You can't look at fund balance for those. So we talked about in the water and sewer fund and our street funds and every other fund. It's fund balance, fund balance, fund balance. You can't look at fund balance in the water and sewer fund and the FAA fund. They're, they're called enterprise fund or proprietary funds. You can see there are water and sewer fund says it has 6.2 million dollars. So we're in great shape and our FAA, FIA fund has 5.4 million dollars. We're in great shape, right? When you flip to the next page, if you look at the cash in those funds on page four dash 10, the very top line, the water sewer fund has $450 of cash and the FAA fund has $97 with the cash. So there's no cash in here. It's not about fund balance in these funds. It's about cash flow. And so not only does the water and sewer fund have like literally zero cash at June 30, but it also owes the general fund back that, that $5 million. One key thing on page four dash 10, where it has that $450 highlighted. One thing to keep in mind is that the rates that we have them set at right now for our water and sewer fund, they are sufficient to cover our annual operating costs. The issue we have here is that people don't pay and we don't enforce that payment. So remember we, go ahead.
We find people.
Yeah, please define that.
Let me rephrase that. Of our, of our. Okay, let me rephrase that. Poor choice of words.
Yes.
Of the amount we bill every year, a substantial portion of that does not get paid. So as an example, if you see the rectangle that I have there, that, that, that is the receivable from our customers. Again, all of our customers, it says 2.1 million dollars. So that's actually not a, a big number. The big number is the real number is that is 6.3 million dollars. So at June 30, we would do 6.3 million dollars. 4.1 of million of that was more than a year old and deemed under the accounting rules to be uncollected because it just every year a million and a half dollars of what we bill never gets paid. And without turning off, without rolling it to tax, it just grows and grows and grows and grows. If on an annual basis, we collected everything we billed, we would have enough money to cover our costs, cover the GLEWA settlement and be break even on a cash flow basis. And if we rolled what's owed to us right now, that's $6 million, the general fund could be repaid in full. But again, we do not do that. So what's happening is every single year we built, we collect several million dollars less than we bill. And therefore that's why we keep falling more and more in the hole as well. Yes.
So do you have an estimate of how much?
Do not, no, I just know gross numbers. That's what the audit is, is gross numbers. So again, million and a half annually, that number increases. So that's why cumulatively we're at 4.1 million dollars. So that's three, four years of bills that are more than a year old that have not been paid. I don't have a breakdown of which ones those are. Yes.
So businesses are not included in these.
Businesses residential, everybody's included in these numbers. I just don't have a breakdown of how much of the amount that's unpaid, how much is businesses, how much is not businesses, et cetera. So yeah, it's just, this is growing, you know, in aggregate of what I'm kind of saying here. So again, just keep in mind, go ahead.
Is there, um, is there any effort being put forward to collect this outstanding debt? I mean, we need this money. Okay. I don't, I don't, I don't see the debt as deemed that's uncollectible. I think that that's some grade A garbage right there. Okay. We need to figure out a way to collect this debt. Whether it be we put it on the tax rolls or whatever the case may be, but that money needs to come into the city. There's no reason that anybody, especially since the residents are paying, there's no reason that anybody should not be paying their bills and all of the weight and all of the burden is on the backs of the residents and the businesses get a break. I got a problem with that. Cause clearly what you're telling me from the numbers in which I do know, the residents are paying. They're paying thoroughly to the tune of 90%. That's almost everybody in the city who lives there. So what about the rest of it? That money needs to be collected. I don't care what's going on. I don't care what you have to do. I don't care what piece of law you need to wrap it around to be comfortable in going to sleep in it. That money needs to be collected.
Yeah, all that is, is that there was, we used to do that. We used to roll everything to the tax rolls.
It needs to be done.
And then it was a resolution at this level that said, we no longer want to do that. So literally all it would take is a resolution at this level to say, we, we now want to do it.
Ms. Delfina?
Yes.
Can, uh, can legal please work on that resolution ASAP?
Well, we, let's investigate first as far as the resolution itself and then what needs to be done. I'm not familiar with that particular resolution, but let's get the resolution first. Investigate before another one is prepared.
I would like to have that collected. Okay. If this council passed the resolution saying that they didn't want to do that anymore, which clearly it wasn't us, it was the previous council, but we being blamed for it nonetheless. I would like a resolution saying that's something we need to do again.
Well, let's pull the resolution and see what it says first and then we can proceed from there.
Yes, ma'am.
You've heard him discuss about how their legal fees associated. The city is currently suing the state land bank, Wayne County land bank and the Manchester property. Those are the biggest, that's the biggest amount of the $2 million.
That's all.
One of the other things that we have, that we are working on now, which council will be getting sued is the ordinance amendments and the ordinance limits for the water department that you have requested are in draft form, which we're working on now. And there is a revision suggesting that the lanes be placed on that. On that. And so I just want you to know that part, you know, part of, you know, Carl was just in the finance.
I know, I know, I know, I know. I know Carl's a good guy. I know Carl is a good guy. Carl is a good guy. I just, he pointed out something that was very interesting to me and I had to respond to that.
We are going after the big abusers. The land banks own thousands of parcels that pay stormwater. There's nothing to shut off because it's stormwater. Okay. And then the Ford factory is fighting us vociferously. That's 73 acres of the city that's not paying there. So we are, that's what these legal fees are that we are, you know, fighting. I just wanted to say that while we're on the subject.
Yeah, because like I say, the, the rates, you know, the, our rates are high. We all, you know, we all know the rates are high and we don't want to increase them. But if we actually collected what we built, we would actually be right where we want to be. You know, but the, the fact that we're not is, is why, you know, we're continuously looking at raising, raising.
Okay, Carl. And if it's possible, if finance could possibly give us a more detailed breakdown and that would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, I'll take, I'll see if I can run a report.
Breakdown of that.
Okay.
Okay. Of everything and everybody that's not paying. If we can get a detailed breakdown of it, because I know you just dealing in the general number as a whole, but I know there's a breakdown to be had there. Okay. And council would like to have that breakdown.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. And, and remember they, I did say deemed uncollectible. That's an accounting rule. So that we, the city do not deem any of that uncollectible. So again, the receivable amount is 6.2 million dollars. And again, our expectation is that will be collected. But what's happening is we show the auditors and they say, well, you have, you know, four million of that, you haven't had a dime collected in five years. So you know, they have to question whether that really is collectible or not. But like I say, as the city, we certainly do. All right. The next page. Again, this just touches on the water and sewer fund there. I've highlighted that $11 million number. So that is the amount basically that was paid to GLEWA. Including there, there were several one-time mandatory court payments. So there was a $1 million, you must pay a million dollars by, you know, Friday. There was a, there were several of those. There was a $240,000 immediate deposit we had to put up. All of those immediate demands for money are over and above our normal operating costs. And that's why that's a very big number to share. Okay. So that's why I've highlighted there. So our actual operating loss for, in the water and sewer fund, cash flow wise was a little over $3 million just last year. And again, that's a high number. Usually the loss is somewhere in the neighborhood of a million and a half dollars. The amount of negative cash that I had talked about, you know, previously. So a lot of things happened last year. The lawsuit was hot and heavy, so the legal fees are in there, et cetera. All of those things were going on during last year. But the reality is there's, you know, the water sewer fund is basically run out of money at the end of last year. The next couple of slides are just, you know, the city does their best to do, you know, to, to do with what we have. And we still continue to invest. A lot of times what happens is when you don't have a whole lot of money, you don't invest in capital. You don't, you know, you defer maintenance and you do a lot of those things. So we, we are guilty of a lot of that, but we continue to try. So on format dash 25 here, this page called capital assets. It shows that in our operating funds, so our non-water and sewer fund, we spent 1.2 million dollars in buildings and equipment and infrastructure type things for the city. So again, you know, we don't have a ton of money, but that again, we're still trying to invest cars and you know, whatever else. That's what that represents. And on the water and sewer fund, we're, we're water and sewer side, which is the other one there. We spent almost 4.7 million dollars on infrastructure last year. So again, we talk about a fund that literally only brings in about $8 million a year, but we're all under all these state mandates of lead line replacements and water line replacements, et cetera. So while we have gotten grants, it's still a substantial number for us. So again, last year, 4.7 million dollars we spent on our infrastructure, just in the water and sewer funds. And where did some of that money come from is the next page here. So some good news and bad news on, on this page. The first, this is our debt. This is our long-term debt page. So that first section there that says governmental activities are overall debt. So this is non-water and sewer debt, all the other debt we have. We started the year with 7.4 million dollars and we're, we're ended the year at 6.5. So we paid down just about a million dollars worth of our debt. The good news is I've highlighted there under the maturity dates. You can see there's three or four of those circles. We actually pay off the 20, 20, 20, 2003 fiscal bonds in, in the current fiscal year. That's $170,000 annually. And in the next two years, we pay off two of the emergency loans that we have annual debt service on to the tune of $400,000 a year. So we're finally getting out from under all those emergency loans and all those fiscal stabilization bonds and everything that was issued way back when, when we first got into trouble and the emergency manager reported everything else, they just issued a ton of debt. We're finally paying that down and we're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel there. So again, that's, that's good news with that. The, the category underneath it, the business type activity there, that's our water and sewer fund. So again, all these mandates that we have for water lines and sewer lines, et cetera. Our debt in the water and sewer fund is 13.7 million. We brought on 3.2 million dollars worth of new debt last year. We paid off about 305. So our outstanding debt is 16.7. So this is outside of the grants. This is just the debt related to everything that we have out there. And this will climb because a lot of the debt we have is on a drawdown basis. So as we put in the water line, we spend the money and then they reimburse us. And that's when the debt, the debt take place. So again, there's a decent amount of debt. The thing there, if you look at the maturities for those, those are 2049, 2050, 2051. So they're very long-term, but ultimately they will have to be paid. Those are like your mortgage on your house. So we issued a bunch of debt, but that's going to be paid over the next 30 years. All right. Now into our pensions. So big, big fireworks display on these next few pages here. So, um, let me explain a little bit on these. Again, this is outstanding news. This is really outstanding news, all of these. So this is our general employees retirement system. If you recall, we have three retirement systems. So as of June 30, the, our actuaries, so what happens every year is we submit to our actuaries. Here's the people getting the pension. Here's the people that are eligible for it. They do their magic gyrations, which are always wrong as far as how long will people live and how much their pensions are and everything else. And so when they came up with their magic numbers, they said, Island, you need to set aside 2.8 million dollars for your general employees retirement system. This is that defined benefit pension plan, not the defined, like not the 401K ones. These are the law, the old ones where we guaranteed a, a pension for life, which obviously we no longer do that stuff. But their magic wand said, you owe, you should set, you owe 2.8 million dollars to fully fund them. You, we have set aside that next box of 1.1 million dollars. So we had an unfunded liability of, of 1.6 million dollars. So we were about 40% funded. So the fireworks part of all this is that with all the state's COVID money, they said, we are going to fund everybody to 60%. And they looked at in ours, if you look at the one I have highlighted, 2020. So they looked at 2020 here and said, your liability was 4.2 million dollars. You have, so of that 4.2 million dollars in 2020, we're going to give you, and for us, it was 1.891 million dollars to get you to 60%. So the key and the good part about this is if you look in 2020, what I highlighted, we were 18% funded in 2020. That's why they gave us that. We're at 40% funded now. So with this 1.8 million dollars, we are almost 90 some percent funded in this plan. Why that's important is where does the money come from to, to fund these pensions? 23 mils on our tax roll every single year. So guess what? When all this pension money comes in here, we, we expect a substantial reduction in the tax rates for our residents starting this coming year. So again, outstanding news as far as that stuff goes. So we jumped from 40% funded to 90% funded for this one. And the next page.
Okay, Carl.
Yes.
Real quick, before we move on. So, so with 90% funding, right?
Yep.
Okay. Um, did, did we not receive $19 million from the state?
Well, you have two more pension plans that'll show you where the rest comes from. Yeah. Now this is just one of them. So remember the three plans.
All right. I'll let you finish before I.
So the next page shows, this is what our contribution history has been for the last 10 years. That rectangle I have there. So in 2014, we were, we were supposed to kick in 470,000 hours a year. And you can see there, this last year, our contribution was 460. So our contribution's been pretty steady. What really changed is in 2019, for every one of these plans, you can see there, we were contributing nothing. And then all of a sudden we, we were made to start, you know, that's when it all went on the tax rolls and we really had to start funding it. So every year since 2019, we've actually over contributed because we put the minimum, the actuary required amount on the tax roll. And then the city had to kick in an extra $230,000 out of the general fund. So again, another important part of this is I expect zero contribution towards these pension plans for the next fiscal year out of the general fund. You know, so again, that'll help offset some of that lost grant revenues that we had before. So again, just helps the general fund and will reduce our taxes. Again, you're talking about almost 10 mils is my guess on how much our mills will go down, which is substantial here. So that's just the general employee system. Real quick, um, the, and you'll like this one. So this is the police and fire retirement system. We were 50% funded in 2020 when they were handing out the money. That's what they use. So we got 1.152 million. As of June 30, we were 108% funded.
Nice.
So that was before this 1.1 million dollars. So we're overfunded, right? So that means we don't have to contribute anything anymore. Wrong. Remember I said actuaries suck and they don't know. I'm sorry, that's an accounting term. They, they are never right until you get about 140% funded, you have to continue to fund it. But with this, with the extra state money, we should be at that 140% funded and have to not contribute anything more to this, this plan, hopefully ever. So that's again, great news there. And if you look at the next page, that's how much we have been contributing. So we started 10 years ago at 577,000. This last fiscal year, we are 209. So again, when we talk about the tax break for our residents, that contribution is going to be zero in the future year. So again, that's levies, we don't have to levy for our taxpayers. And our last pension system, the largest one is the public safety retirement system. So again, with the liabilities, so the actuary said, you need to set aside 23.7 million dollars. We had 3 million set aside. So as of right now, we're a whopping 13% funded. The state gave us 16.79 million dollars because again, we were 7% funded back in 2020, 2020, when they did their calculations. So that raises us substantially. So we go from 3%, 3 million funded to 20 million funded of the 23. So again, almost 80% funded there. And if you look at the contributions on the next page, uh, they start at 623. Our contribution this last year was 2.121 million dollars. So a huge contribution. And with us being that funded, I expect that contribution to drop more than half. And again, that's the amount that goes on our tax roll. So that's awesome. The other thing happening, flip back to the page just before this. I, you see the long rectangle there. The other thing that's happening is we stopped our defined benefit pension plans a long time ago. So there's no new members and our members are getting older and some actually, you know, are deceased. And as that happens, our liability drops. So I forgot to mention this, every one of these, if you look at that rectangle, if you look at 2014, so just the page before that, take a look at the page before that. uh, so just the page before that, take a look at the page before that. For like the public safety one, our liability in twenty fourteen was thirty million dollars. For that same one, right now it's twenty-three million dollars.
Okay.
So what that means is, um, our membership has dropped, the amount of pension that we pay annually has dropped. And so we no longer have to set aside thirty million dollars. As we sit here today, it's twenty-three million. So the liabilities have dropped and unfortunately, we've started funding it and the state gave us a bunch of money. And so like I say, literally, we went from like one of the lowest people ever, you know, to, on the funding levels to, we're right up there with the rest of them. So like I say, that's outstanding news, long-term for our, our pensioners and the ones who can retire.
Okay, Carl. So, um, that is something that the residents would love to hear. My, my question is, is, um, has it started or when will it start that we'll start to see these things come off of the residence tax rolls?
So it, it's usually a December levy.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that it will be on this one. So we have to see what the actuary's required contribution is. I don't know if the actuary took it to, because we didn't get the state money till September of this year.
Okay.
So it might be the following winter tax levy that that happens. But because we might still be bound to the, the last actuary board we had, but it'll be no later than winter twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Tax rule.
Okay.
Yep. And then the last page here is just all the rest of the funds. You can see there, you know, we talked about the, the big ones, but you know, there's the local street fund, our building department fund, again, is pretty self-sustaining. Then we have a bunch of grant funds, the JAG fund, the federal grant fund, CDVG, Inogen Defense, uh, drug law enforcement basically has no money, and then we have our two debt service funds. So we talked about the, the, the big and important ones. And again, I could go on for hours and hours and hours, but uh, that's really the highlights of what we had here. So, um, after me is going to be the auditors. Of this entire eighty-page report here, they only have three or four pages in here. They are, their job is to report back to you, are these numbers right? Is that Carl guy who talks fast, you know, are these real numbers or not? So they give an opinion on if these numbers are correct. And then they also give a letter of comments and recommendations. So that's why I give most of this presentation and then they will opine on what they saw here, if there are any concerns that they have. They'll talk about their opinion. Again, we got a clean opinion, which means everything is exactly how it should be. I don't want to steal our thunder, but you, you know, that's what they're going to talk about. So you'll have your chance to talk directly with the auditor. So before I turn it over to them, anything else on the audit side?
No, we good, Carl.
Again, I appreciate your time. I, I love coming here before you, especially it's, it's a really good report. Really is. Keep up the bat. Thank you.
All right, we have auditors online?
Yes, I'm here.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Alan Panther and I'm a partner at Yo and Yo, and I'm here to present the audit. Um, as, uh, as Mr. Johnson just, uh, referenced, um, the, the entire discussion that he just gave you, um, was in regards to the city's financial condition and financial statements. But my job is to talk about the actual audit. So the audit, the purpose of the audit is to actually validate and give an opinion on the financial statements. So, so everything that he talked about is, is a great discussion. Um, but my job is to talk about the actual auditing of it. So that's, that's, that's what I intend to do. So, um, the audit went very well this year. Um, the city was well-prepared when we arrived and we were able to, uh, complete our procedures efficiently. Um, we did our field work in October and the audit was issued before the state's deadline in December. Um, so that's a, that's a, that's a very good, uh, process there in terms of getting the audit done. Uh, we'd like to thank all the city staff that we worked with, uh, especially Eleanor Williamson, Carl Johnson, Janet, Dennis Bibbs, and Kathy Square. Um, so we really appreciate everything that they did to assist us in completing the audit. Um, so thank you very much for that. Uh, one of our responsibilities as, as auditors, as, uh, Mr. Johnson just, uh, uh, mentioned, is to, um, look at internal controls, um, certain aspects of compliance with state statutes. And also when we find issues with that, it's our responsibility to report in writing when we see that. So we have, we have, we have one audit finding and a few management letter comments, uh, that I'll talk up about in a second here. Um, as Mr. Johnson said, uh, we did give what's called an unmodified opinion. So that is the best opinion you can get. It means a couple of things. It means first of all, the statements are, uh, formatted in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So in other words, everything that's supposed to be there is there. And also based on the procedures that we perform, the numbers are good. So unmodified opinion is definitely what you want to see. The, um, the other thing and the last thing that I wanted to talk about is, um, in your, in your packets, you were, you were distributed what I call the governance letter. And that's a five or six-page letter that's stapled and is, uh, it's issued on our letterhead and it's addressed to management in the city council. It contains some important issues with regard to the audit, um, most of which is, is a form letter, but there are a few things in there that are not, that are, that are a little bit different, um, for the, for the city of, uh, of Highland Park. It also references, uh, of what we call a sensitive note disclosure, so, and that has to do with the Glee Wa litigation. Um, so that there's a, there's a note in our opinion regarding that. There's a note in the, in the financial statements and there's a note in the governance letter, all regarding that Glee Wa litigation. We are communicating one issue that we're calling a ma- a material weakness, and that has to do with the budget overage that Mr. Johnson discussed at the beginning of his talk. Um, so that's the compliance aspect of that, as he stated, um, when you over expend your budget, um, that is against the law. So we're, um, so we're, we're calling that out there in the audit. Um, and then the last thing is, uh, management letter comments. So these are comments that we, um, that we accumulate as we go through the audit and we, um, communicate them to the city. We do have six management letter comments. All of them are repeats of prior year issues. So in other words, they were not addressed this year. So there are six issues there. Um, and I can go through them if you like, but if you'd like to just get on with your meetings, let, you just let me know that.
We have another fifteen minutes set aside. It will take longer than that. We typically do an hour for this workshop.
Alrighty. Um, then I'll go through the six management letter comments that I have. Um, the first, the first one has to do with an annuity contract. So there is an annuity contract that, that we are in possession of that, um, names the city as a beneficiary. Uh, it's reported as an asset and a liability, but nobody can tell us, um, who is the actual beneficiary of the, of the annuity or what it relates to. So, um, we're, we're suggesting that someone at the city, um, figure that out and how to treat it. Um, the second has to do with your pension trusts. So as, as Mr. Johnson, um, uh, talked about, you, the city does have three pension trusts, three, three, uh, three, um, three, um, so those, those, I'm sorry. The, the pension trusts are there to fund those benefits that have been promised by the city. All of those funds are in cash. They are not invested, um, which we commonly see. Um, in fact, the city of Highland Park, so the city of Highland Park is holding all of those investments in cash, which that's the only example. I, I've worked with a lot of governments for a long time. And this is the, this is the only time I've ever seen that, that, that these investments are not being appropriately invested. So we're, we are, um, we are suggesting that the city invest those funds, um, as, as is allowed under state law, um, to further reduce its, its exposure to that pension liability. Um, so that's there as well. Um, the next issue has to do with compliance with, uh, the city's compensated absence policy. Um, we looked and saw that there were several individuals with balances that are less than zero um, on there. And there are also, um, there are also individuals that, uh, their balances on there are, are out of compliance with, uh, collective bargaining agreements. Um, so those, those are, that's communicated as well. Um, unpaid social security withholdings. Um, the city has a liability of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for unpaid social security taxes and penalties related to three employees that didn't have FICA withheld um, on participation in the police and fire retirement plan. So this was several years ago that this happened, but there's a liability out there for this. So we recommend that the city works with the Social Security Administration to rectify this issue. Two more issues, property tax disbursements. Um, property taxes are required to be, uh, remitted to the various entities, uh, within ten days of the first and the fifteenth of every month when they're being collected. Um, we found that the property taxes are not being remitted to the various entities. Um, we're talking the state, the county, um, mainly is where most of that money goes. Uh, those, those, those taxes are not being remitted on the requirement, on the, on the timeline that's required. Um, and then last issue is a lack of required policies. So the city, um, there's certain policies that the state requires that the city has. And, um, there are two of those that are missing. Uh, electronic transaction policy and acceptance of credit cards. So those are, those are required by state law and the city does not have those. And again, all of the issues that I talked about were, were there last year. Um, so there was no change in any of these issues during the year. Do you have any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Council, we have questions for this gentleman?
Um, I got one question, Council President.
Knock yourself out.
Um, you stated that the, uh, uh, that the funds didn't get to where they needed to go on time. Uh, did they make it at all? Is the question I want to know.
Yes, they did.
It was paid. It just wasn't paid on time.
The taxes were paid, they just weren't paid on time.
Okay, okay.
Councilman, let me expand on that too. So the required disbursement is every two weeks. There were two instances where it wasn't, the two weeks didn't get met.
Okay.
So of the twenty-four disbursements, two of the disbursements didn't get made on time.
Okay.
But everyone was made one hundred percent reconciled. Uh, the treasurer settles with the county, et cetera.
Okay. And what's the man's name over here again? I'm sorry, what's your name again?
My name is Alan.
Oh, okay, Alan, uh, in the future, if possible, and it's just, uh, suggested, I really hate talking to a blank screen. I really like to look a person in the eye. So if next time you could come here and address the city of Highland Park in person, we would greatly appreciate that.
Um, I offered to do that and I was told that that was, uh, not desired. Um, so, yeah, so, um,
They told, hold on a second.
I'd be happy to come.
They told you, somebody told you that it was not desired for you to come here and address this council and this public in person?
That's correct.
Interesting. Anybody like to, like to raise their hand and tell me who that was? I sure love to know. Anybody? Any takers?
My guess is there was a miscommunication.
Miscommunication, my ass, Carl.
Again, it, that, he comes from our department. So there's, we would not have said.
I, I appreciate your call. I appreciate your miscommunication, my ass.
Okay, but again.
Let's make sure we maintain the proper decorum in this.
So again, that's, that's on me then.
Okay.
Because again, I, we would not have told them that. And again, it could have been a carryover from last year as well. You know, so we will make sure the auditor is standing here.
Which I will be here for. I would like to see them in person.
Yeah, and again, that's on me. That's on me.
Thank you.
I'll make sure. And let me touch one more on those pension funds as well.
Thank you, Mr. Panther.
The, um, we only had a few million dollars. And that's why there really wasn't a whole lot invested. We didn't want to put them in the stock market for risk, you know, with the pension levels being as low as they are. So we're in the process of drafting up. Uh, I'm, I'm a treasurer at several other communities and there are instruments where we can put it in basically, um, instruments that are safe. We won't lose money, you know, like money market funds and that kind of stuff. And right now those are paying four, five, six percent. So we're in the process of drafting up a resolution to get back to you, to get you to pass that. And then we'll be able to transfer those funds over because again, we talk about thirty million dollars now, five percent of thirty million dollars is a lot of money. And so that's where we're at. But before this, you know, again, remember the state gave us twenty million and we only, we only have thirty Q motive, so we didn't have a whole lot of money. And we, we didn't want to, again, pension funds can be invested in stock markets, you know, stocks, bonds, all that stuff. You know, stock market goes up and down and we didn't want to risk any of that kind of stuff. So that's why a lot of the reason it was there. So we're now a, at a point where it's going to, and so that will be rectified before next year. So.
All right. Thank you so much, Carl. Thank you, Mr. Williamson. We are, uh, we have achieved our goal here for this workshop is to really flesh out, um, necessary information prior to any decision the council needs to make on the budget. So now we will move into good and welfare. Councilman from District Three.
I'm good. I'm good. You know, you know what? In fact, in fact, I will speak. I find it disheartening that every time I turn around, there is something that is trying to be kept from this council. It's not like I'm getting a full picture or full disclosure of what's going on. I'm looking at this Bible here and so much is missing from it. And so much is said, but yet so much is not said. I really would appreciate it if we, this council and the administration could work at least on a professional enough level. So we get the information, we need to make an informed decision and everything can run smoothly. When I hear things like somebody advised them not to come here and speak to us, I take great offense to that. Who the hell told y'all that that was your place to do? They should be here in person to address this city, address these residents about the expenses and the money that's coming out of their pockets. And I'm tired of every time I turn around, something is being hid or something is being kept or something is not being shared.
Well said, sir. Let's move through good and welfare and we'll have a, an opportunity to expand.
I'm, 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 I'm still speaking, sir.
This, this is good and welfare.
All I'm saying is, I'm simply saying, if you want to work with us, we're willing to work with you. But you're not going to sit here and give us half-assed information and then expect us to make an informed decision.
Let me remind you, this is not the council meeting. This is the workshop. So Ms. Martin, do you have anything to offer for good and welfare? Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Manic, do you have anything to offer for good and welfare? Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Protem, do you have anything to offer for good and welfare?
No, only to reiterate everything that council mentioned, a shot and say.
Thank you so much. So I have nothing to offer for good and welfare. So we will bring the workshop meeting to a close. We will start our regular scheduled meeting promptly at seven PM after a brief recess. Thank you very.